On Monday, August 28th at 7:00 p.m., please rise for pledge allegiance to the Ominous Silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I would like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to add a closed session at the end of the meeting to discuss negotiations. That would be item number nine. Any questions?
What was it again?
Oh, to talk negotiations. A closed session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, that passes. Up next, we have, I guess we shift right into consent agenda items. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion that Board of Education approves of consent agenda items, including agenda, minutes, personnel items, treasure report, and bills as listed items to be received. Support.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That passes as well. Moving right along, information items. Mr. Melrose?
Yeah, today we start with our orientation. Today we had grades 10 to 12 come through. Again, very busy. A lot of kids coming through, getting all their information, pictures taken. Tomorrow will be 7 through 9. It tends to be our more busy session because helping kids at lockers and they're new to the buildings. But today we're having a very smooth, I anticipate the same thing tomorrow. Start of the year, we have some openings still in the building at the high school. Two that we anticipate will be filled by the end of this week. That would be a PE. We had a shift. One of our special ed teachers that wanted to take a PE position, so she filled in over there. And so we're short of special ed person, so right now we're looking to fill that position. And then, right now, we have the shift room right now that we're looking into. We have an idea what we're doing. We have an interview tomorrow, and that might help kind of make some motion, but we think that's going to be completed. Two that we anticipate that will be open when we start the year, our special ed position. Amy Gerlando is going to be subbing long-term support for that until we find another candidate for that. And then also for science, right now, we have not been qualified, so we have certification right now, the DX, the DI required. So what we're going to be doing is, the students will be ingenuity, it'll be the one that they did for virtual, not the one they use for E2020, the virtual one, they're tied to certified instructor online. So they'll still be coming into class, they'll be working on it there. We're going to have a sub, Mr. Bob David, who's an exceptional sub for us here, he'll be there to monitor the room, to provide help for the students logging in and all that. That's what we'll be doing. As official talk I've discussed, we've been posting it everywhere, looking up where we could possibly look. And as soon as we find somebody, we will put them face-to-face with the kids as soon as we have them there, even with having them on, starting off with computers. Fall sports started. Congrats to Coach Manscudling's first game this year with the varsity fraternity, so that was, it was feeling good. They obviously had to stop the game because of the storm rolling through, so they had to restart the next day. That makes for a tough day for the kids, a long day, but they came through and were successful. They had a short turnaround due to some issues with referees throughout the state, which I think is only going to get worse as the years go on. They had to move some schedules around, so they're actually playing on Wednesday at Double Hundred, JEP in the varsity. Some of your first home games, it's hell of a lot this Wednesday. And then September 6th, we're getting ready for our first Saturday, but I think everything's looking good.
Brian, the ingenuity classes, that more about stopgap just until you get someone?
I mean, it's right now, we're going to use until we find somebody. Except I'm continuing to look. I've reached out to colleges, people kind of gave me some names, I've reached out to some other people, so we're going to use that place. But again, the positive is that again, there's a certified teacher online that they can go and get help from if they're having any questions in those substitute areas.
How does that work for labs?
They're virtually, I think that they have some videos and things of that nature, but they're not doing actual labs, but they'll do videos to kind of show what their reactions are.
And like Brian said, knowing that, you know, it's not ideal, it's not necessarily where we want to be with a science position like that. We do, ingenuity was by choice, so at least the most in terms of a program that we could have, probably the most intensive of all of them, probably the most in-depth. Have the substitute teacher in the classroom again to guide it. It's not going to be like the online where you're moving, you know, just your own page. We're going to structure it as a class, as, you know, reporting every day to science class, just as is. And then, like I said, if and when we find somebody, we would either, A, continue with that person working through that program, or if the person feels there is a spot where they can continue what they're doing.
I can share, based on my own experience, while quality isn't ideal, I had kids take the ingenuity classes at the high school level, and it was pretty challenging.
Well, before, a couple moments ago, I know that we're some complaints before not being able to find somebody live, we were having trouble, so Mr. D. should kind of tap up that ground if we could.
Yes, as much as we can for chem and physics. And then, you know, I've also talked to Ryan about talking to some of our science teachers maybe for a snip and to help out and be that extra support person as well, so.
We've looked at one of the things, there's a couple of science teachers that weren't, who were trying to get, come back, who were retired, that tried to come back to do it, and they weren't willing to do that. But I'm still going to try to talk to them, maybe it'll come in a couple of days, a week, just to provide, you know, tools to help those kids become, and they might do that a couple of months.
Mrs. Stacey?
Yes, so Elgantquin's coming together, looking pretty good. Our parking lot received a facelift, and the cafeteria, they're still, I believe, working. I haven't got a final word that the sound system is being installed right now, but I haven't received a final word that it's ready to go. So I'm sure there'll be a couple of training and tutorial things prior to that. So we're looking forward to that. Getting a ton of new enrollments, I feel like we're getting three, four a day rolling in, so that's been, that's been really picking up for us. We have a few new additions to Elgantquin. Mariana Elliott is transferring over to teach fourth grade. Michelle Haberichter, I think is how I say her last name, she'll also be teaching fourth grade. And Lauren Sroll will come in and be teaching sixth grade social studies for us. And we'll have a new special ed para, Teresa Rowan. So we're looking to welcome them. Also, Elgantquin's pretty excited that we have a full one-to-one set of Chromebooks with some extra replacements for all of our students. So that will be really big this year. We won't be, you know, shuffling them around or hoping a couple of kids are absent, so a teacher will have a full set. Evan and Karen worked hard to get all those carts together for us, and we're hoping, you know, that they hang on for quite some time now. Also, we have been having Noah Arpan work on our clothing closet that Janice organized as an Eagle Scout project, so I was just in there a little bit ago. It went from a big dumping ground that Janice would have to pull out into the cafeteria every time for people to shop, that now you can actually walk in, it's organized, you can view all the items, so we're looking forward to that, too.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanders?
So Millside is still under construction at this time, lots of exciting things going on there, so we're hoping. Heating and cooling, the units have been delivered, they're currently installed, running wires, so they're there every day right now, getting that ready. The front door has, the doors have been moved up for the entryway, and the new door has been cut in, there's some finishing up there that they need to do with the wiring and things, and we're just waiting on our secretary desk, hopefully. Any day, she has some great tables set up in there to get us through with till that time, and we also got a new carpet in there. So coming together, it'll be really great once it's all done. So excited about that. Lots of kindergarten assemblies in this last week, so I was worried it's going to be a really small class. Right now, we're in the low 90s for our kindergartens, so right about where we've been typically. Going there, we have, we're welcoming Deanna Warden to first grade this year, and Selena Polfelder transferred over to Millside for first grade this year. And we also have two paraprofessionals coming in, Danielle Zee and Julie Haddins, so we're excited to have them join the Millside team. Our transitional K class is a goal, we have lots of support from our community and our parents, so we have a full class section. Dana Tadino will be teaching that, as well as Lisa Robinson, her junior sister. So real excited at Millside. Training over the summer has been taking place, so we had high school training for biology. People come out and work with biology curriculum with Nish and Stephanie Urban, so that I had a wonderful day of training, lots of career learning going on there. So, and Andrea Matska is joining us to our science team as well. She also receives some science training with Mina Gerala de Risa for the middle school science curriculum, so that worked well. The ELA committee for the elementary also worked a little bit over the summer, and will be continuing working on the fall, working a new curriculum for next year's summer.
Mrs. Closeout?
So this Thursday is our last day of our summer program, which means we will be having our end-of-the-year summer party. That is always a busy, fun-filled day. Teachers have been getting their rooms ready for the beginning of this school year. We have a lot of preschoolers in all three of our rooms, three years old and four years old, but we still do have openings. We have our open house September 6th for children and families to come meet their teacher and check out the school, and we are excited to start a new school year.
Up next, we have an MASB delegate assembly coming up on November 9th at 7:00 p.m., and we need to appoint two delegates and an alternate. I know, Janice, you had expressed an interest.
If I could.
Okay. Who else?
Yeah, I have to be there for the regulation to varsity.
So who else would like to go?
It's in Lansing.
Yeah, it's in Lansing.
So we need two delegates and an alternate for everybody.
I can put it on each of them, alternate.
I didn't put that.
Okay, all right.
So we'll be there. We'll all be there.
Do you think you're going to need an alternate?
I don't think we'll need an alternate.
Oh.
Feel pretty good about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay.
But we'll be, you know.
I'll get us some classes, too.
Yeah.
And speaking of classes, for the new gentleman, we do have to, you have to take that training for school or ALSS evaluation, superintendent evaluation, is the one class that does have to get.
I can be there right now.
For, that is, for the state will allow you to participate in doing ALSS evaluation. Right, so we'll figure that out.
At the MASB this year, you can do it virtual, too. There's a virtual option.
Yeah, there's a virtual.
Yeah, I think some of their classes are virtual as well.
Any other board reports?
Just that we did get together last year, Jen and Janice and I started working on the four operating procedures manual, so by next month we have something to show Janice. Our timeline, I don't know.
And then they will go, like the others, with a first reading?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're working on the operating procedures, the operating. It's not so real, like, it's probably the biggest split for the exam, we need to try to match what we already have, you know, in our system, so. Does it matter?
I went to the Summer Institute in August, it was over at the Macomb County ISD, and just some takeaways I got from there, basically, the theme was really kind of be cohesive in your school district, and creating a culture of, you know, support for each other, including staff and students, so everybody's working together as one. And basically, data collection, which we talked about before, is really important because that's a good way to integrate, you know, getting everybody together in one team, and educating from kindergarten all the way up to graduation, so that there's a flow. So I just thought that that was a good thing, is good just to go and talk to other board members and find out how they use their tools to improve their schools, because it's not always the kids that need to improve, it's usually the adults, and then the kids are just kids. So that was my takeaway from that.
I guess feedback on that, I did attend the legal updates last week, it was a virtual meeting for the gap date. There's a lot of good information in that, and I would suggest if any of you, there is an add-on at date for the college student, whatever you call it, that they have a legal update, it's an all-day thing, and it's very informative, so anyway, if you just wants to go for that one day, to, you know, maybe I can tell you what they learned, but I'm afraid they'll go wrong, I don't want to screw it up. So I can share the slides and stuff they did, they presented, but again, it's a lot of legal stuff that it's better to like go there and listen to them, have that talk. So that workshop, I think it was like the Thursday, it's all day, you can go just for that if you want, but it's very, it's got a lot of good information in there, just so much is changing. You know, Michigan law's changed and stuff, so there's so much changing, so if you can't go for the whole thing, I would highly recommend going for that, it's called the legal workshop, I don't, I don't, you know.
Not for that.
If you call ours, I can book it for you, but I would recommend, yeah. No, it's called the.
Legislative, I think, right?
It's not the legislative, it's a legal.
It's illegal, it's not a lawyer.
So they cover anything, so if you have questions about your district, about what may or may not be proper, you can ask, the people are right there, ask them.
Yeah, it's an all-day at the leadership conference, and it's on Tuesday. Thursday, it's Thursday, and it's, I mean, I went last year, I'm not going this year, but I know these guys are going, it's called, it's called the, where is it? Pre-conference workshop.
School attorney's.
What's that?
Michigan Council of School Attorney's Law Conference.
Yes, so anybody can attend that, it's a lot of good information. And even just from going to that last year and then doing just this update, this four-hour update last week, you know, and we learned a lot last year.
It's really helpful.
And then you get this new stuff that's even been updated since then, so I would strongly suggest, or if there's something, you can come in and tell us, if we have enough people, maybe they'll come in here and give us an update. If you guys are interested, you can't wait for it, so. That's all I have. Thanks, Rob.
Anything else? All right. Which is good, because I think if Rob had more time, he was going to fill out three or four more blue sheets.
What's that?
I'm teasing.
I said, any more board reports, because you're up next. I said, if there was more time, Rob would fill out more blue sheets.
Sorry, I do really.
Yeah, I do have just a couple of things, and, you know, the principal's talking a little bit on the projects. We are closing out, hopefully those are, and I'm just, so I'm sure you guys are well aware, those projects are not something that we decided to do in August, and that's why they're running late. Those are projects that have been on the books for a year and a half, and we're just competing with every other district out there, trying to get things done at the end of the school year, like most construction people do. And so I, we're ready to go with those things, they're exciting, it's good to have, hopefully that all tips off well. Did want to comment a little bit on staffing, on personnel items, you know, certainly to the two teachers, I wanted to know about Mark's departure, Abby Adams, you know, longtime employees, and, you know, it hurts like cactus, and it's kind of people like that. Mark certainly, you know, I, Mark's a friend of mine, I came in to the district with Mark, we coached football our first year together, 37 years ago. Had a very good conversation with him on the way out, talked a little bit about what his, you know, kind of where he was, and he explained to me why it was a good move for him, and I, you know, certainly appreciate that, understand that, you know, people move on. It's a different age in education right now. We know that they're, and when I use the word critical when I talk about teacher shortage, it's critical, it's critical, and it's say it's critical in the country. The other side of that is, it opens up a lot of opportunities for people to go other places and have new opportunities, and sometimes bigger, better opportunities. So, you know, generally, at the end of the school year, we tend to lose three or four. This year, we lost six district-wide, and I do believe it has a lot to do with that, a lot to do with some opportunities financially, certainly in the conversations I've had with people that are leaving, and that's a factor as well. But, you know, for us, I think we just need to, you know, learn from it and do the best we can with it, and hopefully, you know, one of the things I'll talk to you about in closed session, too, is, you know, some of my ideas on how we might be able to do some things to hopefully make at least that not as big of a barrier, too, so. But I did want to at least make sure that I talked a little bit about that. Conversation I had with Janice over the past week, one of the things that we wanted to bring back, if you remember, right back before COVID, we had started doing, different departments would do a curriculum presentation to the board on new things, and we got through the ELA stuff, and then we started into, got through the math, started into ELA, and then we stopped doing board meetings for a while, at least lag ones. And so Janice had asked, you know, if there's a way we can bring those back, and I really think with the updates to some of the curriculum, and, you know, being able to revisit, finish that, I think it would be a good thing, maybe, you know, to start with a different group each time, maybe break it up into elementary and secondary, but just to be able to share that with the board.
Even then, the last time, it was just a spud or fillet, I, from those, those curriculum works, so everybody else was, to the board.
Oh, that's true, too, yeah, yep. So that would be a good thing. So yes, I do plan on, you know, getting with the principals and make sure that we organize that. Yep. And then, just lastly, the teen health clinic that we had, working on, down with the science room, that's now turned kind of into, at least it's in transition over there, get a chance to walk down there at some point, there's walls up, there's doors, there's lots on doors, so we're moving in the right direction. You know, I don't know if it will necessarily actually five on the first day of school, but we're moving in that direction, so.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
In another week's later, but I see a lot of IG chasing, and those guys working in that room, doing things. Who pays them?
Yeah, that was part, part of our commitment, John, was, you know, that we would provide the labor for that, you know, the grant position itself is fully funded with the personnel, with the supplies, with all that kind of stuff, that was our commitment to it.
And this is, to make sure I'm on, we're on the same page here, this is a trial period, correct?
When I talked to them, the idea was that we would see how it would go this year, get things up and running, at least for a year, I'm assuming, they got a full date on it.
Is it like maybe an idea, a backhaul a year or something?
If we're, if we're, my plan, just so I, so you brought it up, my plan, one of the things that I'm looking at, because, so if you remember when we talked before, we acknowledged that it's not going to be our permanent structure down there because of the restrooms. If we were to go with that, it would be based on, it's kind of the whole going hand-in-hand with how long we have a clinic, it's going to be, are we going to get funding from the state, and that's going to be through a grant. And so if we do not, the cost of doing something different is going to be something that we're not going to do as a district. But if indeed we can get to the maximum, making ass worse, $250,000, the potential to have a modular even, that has the clinic hosted on campus is a possibility, I mean, there's some different ideas, but, you know, the fall will bring around that grant period, and then obviously we'll apply and see where that takes us, and if and how much we get. And that's.
Sorry for skipping the photograph.
That's okay.
Following different tools than normal.
No problem.
All right, now we have visitors in our class, which we have Mr. Rob Mitchell. Should I? Rob, you'd like to talk to new hires and.
I can do it, I can do it, one or the other. He's starting. So I was going to ask this question, but I was just not ready to get it out. See five new special education paraplegos, and one or another, so forth and so on. Just curious if there's any insight into a change in demographic in our school, and what we're, what we're doing to make sure we, if there is, what we're doing to make sure we support that, right? So obviously, that would suggest there's a change in policy, a change in demographic, and a change in the needs of our students as people move forward, so I'm kind of curious. I don't want to read too much into that, I just was glaring that there were so many of them, and what caused that.
Fair question. Rob, we've had paraprofessionals, are tough to come by as is, and so, so we've kind of always talked about, you know, if we get, we find some good ones, and we're going to hire, and we're going to, you know, because there is a lot of overturning. In terms of the special ed areas, we've been short, and operating short for quite a while. Yes, the population has gone up a little bit, and the support for those kids has increased as well, but it's just a way of, you know, us kind of catching up and making sure that we are giving those, those students the full support that they need. You know, I don't know if we're quite there yet, but I think we've got almost all of them filled at this point. But it's just a way of, you know, the severity of some of our students has increased, more hands-on deck kind of thing, and we've found some pretty talented ones, so.
That's wonderful, I just was kind of curious to see what things were about.
Fair question.
Just something that stuck out, something that's, so I appreciate that. Second, I'm on reservations. Just want to make a comment. How do you let student of, I mean, teacher of the year, you've got kids that are lining up trying to get into his class, you've got teachers that are looking up to him, I'm sure there's mentoring opportunities, how do we, how do we drop the ball and miss, swing and miss on such a lot? I think this is a huge sad day for our school, we let a teacher of the year leave, and it impacts positively so many students. So I just want to make sure that, go ahead, I voiced that. Anyway, I'm not sure about all the other things that are gone on, but I think I read Facebook, but that's not why I'm, that's not why I'm here. I'm truly here to say, wow, we dropped the ball on this one, guys. And I hope that we don't drop the ball again, I'm really kind of curious what we're going to do. It almost seems like you selected a franchise player, and then they end up leaving anybody. So it's, I'm just curious on.
Any comments or anything like that, since we've spent a lot of time there tonight?
And like I said, I wouldn't, can't really go into the detail of the conversation I had.
No, I understand, but that's just.
But at the same point.
It's the optics of it, though.
I understand, I completely do, but I'll say it this way, and, you know, I know everybody's got their opinions on maybe what took place, or the ideas on what took place. I will say this, but, and again, this is someone that I came through the system with, so it's a very, you know, it's a bit one, but doesn't always mean somebody did do their job on our end. Sometimes opportunities come up from people, and I'm not, I'm not going to stop somebody from trying to better their situation if they feel, or their families.
All right, I just want to share, so. All right. I guess, yes, would you like to talk priorities for this?
I was here about three months ago, I think, and maybe a little bit longer, apologize to try to get everyone more off of that, but one of the questions I asked board members was what are your top three or four priorities for the coming school year? And I understand that you all have met. And I understand that you all have met and thought on this, so I'm kind of excited. Actually, I see this like maybe you were part of the January nineteen-seventh on the.
It is, yep.
So maybe I, maybe I can go ahead and retract that question in order, if you want to.
Good. I think it's a good segue. I'll just, I'll, I'll cover briefly the, what I think is fine per minute to what you're asking. You asked for three, we'll give you five.
Three, five, yeah, all right.
The first one, support all Helganac students as they prepare for a successful life, right? So all students, lots of opportunities, some college, some to trade, some to, right? Opportunities for, for all to be successful in, in life. To your last comment, to recruit and retain dynamic staff members who are highly effective and continuous learners. Obviously, we need to foster that culture of teachers who want to be here, right? To get the best and the brightest for our kids in our district. That's paramount. Safety, to continue to provide a safe physical and positive mental environment for students and staff, like. So safe all, all, all the way around curriculum. To deliver a curriculum that is relevant to student success through a variety of innovative methods. So online, you know, technical, online, all, hall forums, formats. And then finally, to continue strengthening parent, community communication and engagement, right? Our teachers are here, and the students are in our buildings during their days, but then they go home, and it takes village, right, literally. So supporting our parents and getting that engagement with the community, we think is also very important. So those were our, those were our five district goals. And what we're gonna adopt on the.
Wonderful. Looking forward to talking to all of you more on.
We, we review those district goals yearly, too, so, you know, next, when we do it, over the summer.
Yeah.
If we feel something happens, yeah.
And it's an open meeting, too.
Awesome. I'd love to join. And if I can close on a positive note. Thank you to a number of you that have worked very hard at the state level for giving us student lunches. I don't know if that was brought up at a previous meeting or not, but I just want to say, really, I know that a number of you have been pushing this at the state level, and Janice, and, you know, this is something that has built, you know, something that's really been important to me after saying it firsthand. So, but again, I'm excited that.
Thank you. That's right, sir. Thanks, Rob.
Appreciate it.
Up next, we have the action item that we just discussed as a group. Would anyone like to make a motion? I'll take that one. Sorry?
I'll motion that the Board of Education approve the updates to the Helganac Community Schools Board and District Commission, State and Board's best representatives.
Supported any questions or comments? It was a good discussion, right? All those who clear say aye. Any votes? If that passes. And with that, I would like to make a motion to go into closed session at 7:40 P.M. and discuss negotiations. Support it, all those who clear say aye. Any votes? If that passes.